That was great.
I would like to call to order the May 27th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first item of business is 1.2, adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second? Agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item 2.1, announcements. Our next regular meeting of the school board, it will be on Tuesday, June 17th at 7:00 PM here at the district center. At this time, we'll move on to agenda item 2.2, superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you Diane. Tonight, I actually have a little bit of a longer report, I think as the board knows, but for the public, each spring, the state of Minnesota asks us to provide an update on our Q Comp program. And traditionally, we've done that as part of the superintendent's report, so I'll do that again this evening. So, for those who might not know, Moundsview Public Schools was one of the first of three school districts in the state to implement Q Comp. And over the course of that time, it really has been a very successful program for us. There are five components that make up the Q Comp program that we are required to highlight, and I want to go over them this evening. The first is career advancement options. Sometimes you'll hear those referred to as career ladder positions. Examples of these positions include, in our system, things like building instructional leadership team members. We have a lot of acronyms, so BUILT members is built positions you'll hear us talk about. Instructional strategies facilitators, or ISFs. Some of our content area specialists, CASs are also part of that group. In total, we have approximately 112 people in positions like this, which is roughly about 13% of our teaching staff. The work of these teacher leaders is really an essential part of our PLC-based system, and the support they provide has helped us to improve both our practice as well as student achievement district-wide. Definitely a very positive part of our school culture. A second component that we need to highlight is job embedded professional development. A key message here is that much of the professional development associated with our Q Comp program is focused on in-district opportunities. Our professional development is often done by teachers for teachers. It doesn't mean that no one goes to conferences. Of course, we go out and do that as well outside of the district. It's just not the primary focus of our professional development in the Q Comp program. One example of job embedded professional development is the growth and development opportunities that are part of our teacher development and appraisal process. Again, another acronym for you, TDAP is what we call that. As part of the PLCs, teachers have the opportunity to learn from one another on how to best use high-yield instructional strategies in their classrooms. Micro-teaching is another thing you may have heard of, or will continue to hear about. It's a technique that our teachers have used to learn and grow. At its core, it's a digitally-recorded lesson where a highly effective teacher models an instructional strategy within their classroom. And then by recording that instruction, it allows groups of teachers to come together, watch the instruction, talk with their peers, ask questions, gather ideas, and then go back and implement that strategy in their own individual classrooms. I've been really very impressed at how effective this technique has been in the adoption of best-practice strategies in our classrooms, and I want to commend our teachers for their commitment to that ongoing development. Again, clearly having a positive impact. A third component of the Q Comp program is teacher evaluation, and our teacher evaluation is embedded as part of that TDAP process. Appraisal takes place really at two levels in our system, both at the team level as well as at the individual team member level. The benefit that we see to this approach is that the work teachers are appraised on is directly connected to the work they're doing individually and collectively in their classrooms. The work of the PLCs isn't something that's separate. We're a different evaluation, but it's all packaged together and connected integral to the work they do on a daily basis. Fourth component is the alternative pay system. And our Q Comp system includes alternative pay in the form of stipends for teacher leaders, specifically those career ladder positions I talked about earlier, which were the BUILT members, ISFs, CASs. Other components of the alternative pay system are included as part of our more comprehensive salary schedule as well. And the final component we want to report on is general view of the program. This year, 99% of our tenured staff completed the necessary requirements to receive their full alternative compensation as part of our Q Comp program. For probationary staff, this also increased to 99% this year. So, a nice increase for us. Great news tells us that the balance of our staff are willing and able to complete the necessary requirements to receive the full compensation. That's important because the way Q Comp is organized in our system, while every teacher has the opportunity to earn full compensation, there's no guarantee that they'll just automatically get it. They do have to go through those expectations. So, great to see so many of our staff meeting expectations in our Q Comp program. So, for the board, and I guess more for the public, I just want everyone to know, Q Comp continues to be a very successful program in our district. I think it has been embedded, and the way it's been embedded in the work we do here in Moundsview, very complimentary to our overall goals. We believe it works towards our student achievement as well, and we hope the state will continue to support this program into the future. So that's my update on Q Comp. I do have a couple other announcements and recognitions I want to make this evening. First, with a recognition, I am pleased to let you know that Moundsview High School Principal Rob Reitz was named High School Principal of the Year for the Minnesota Capital Division. Rob was nominated and selected by his peers for his outstanding leadership, commitment to student achievement, and dedication to fostering a positive school culture. So this coming December, statewide selection board reviews the materials from the eight finalists from across the state, and will select one individual to represent Minnesota at the national level. Tonight, we just want to congratulate Rob on this wonderful recognition. We're very proud of him and wish him well as he moves forward in that competition. And for announcements, this is our last meeting prior to our graduation ceremony, so I want to highlight those dates. We did have CLT graduation last week, and I had a chance to be there and visit with those students, staff, and parents. But upcoming dates, ALC graduates this Thursday, May 29th, 7:00 PM at Bethel. Irondale High School graduates Monday, June 2nd, 7:00 PM at Mariucci Arena. Moundsview High School is Wednesday, June 4th, 7:00 PM at Mariucci. And our Adult Basic Ed Program graduates Thursday, June 5th, 7:00 PM at the Moundsview Community Center. So congratulations to all of our grads and their families. And that's my report this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you Superintendent Lennox. We'll now move on to item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second? The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is 4.1, resolution awarding sale of certificates. I'll turn this back over to Superintendent Lennox.
Thanks Diane, back to me. So, as you know, we've been working through the process of purchasing the Northeast Youth and Family Services Building, or NYFS, again acronym, building. Tonight, we are recommending the board take action regarding the sale of certificates of participation, which is the funding mechanism that allows us to lease purchase that property. So we work with our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly, and through them, we're recommending the board award the sale of certificates to Northland Securities Incorporated. The resolution in your packet, multiple pages, includes all of the detail and information required for the sale. And again, tonight, administration is recommending your approval of that resolution and the sale of certificates.
Great. Any questions? Okay. So I would entertain a motion for the attached resolution authorizing the execution and delivery for the lease and the creation of the certificates therein for the purpose of financing the project and other authorized causes.
So moved.
Second? The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion, excuse me? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Superintendent Lennox.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to item 4.2, 2025-26 enrollment and class size update. We would like to welcome up Darren Johnson, Executive Director of School Management.
Good evening, thank you. Included in your board packet this evening, you'll find an enrollment and class size update for the 25-26 school year as of May 22nd, 2025. This data will continue to be updated throughout the spring and summer months as we move closer to the start of the 25-26 school year, which will occur on September 2nd. In addition to the attachment that has been provided for you, I'd also like to provide additional remarks as it relates to our current enrollment calculations. In summary, as of May 22nd, the number of enrolled students at our two kindergarten centers for the upcoming school year is 918, which represents 194 students above our projected count of 724. The number of enrolled students at our six 1 through 5 elementary schools for the upcoming school year is 4,222, which represents 41 students above our projected count of 4,181. The number of enrolled students at our three middle schools for the upcoming school year is 2,613, which represents 17 students above our projected count of 2,596. And finally, the number of enrolled combined students at Irondale and Moundsview High Schools for the upcoming school year is 3,700, which represents 118 students above our projected count of 3,582. Currently, in total, before the spring task of calculating the departures of current Moundsview Public School students, we have 11,453 K-12 students, which represents 370 students more than the 25-26 projection of 11,083. To compare numbers, this spring, we are also set to graduate approximately 875 students from Irondale and Moundsview High Schools. This upcoming fall, there are approximately a combined enrollment of 915 students at Snail Lake and Pike Lake Kindergarten Centers. With these numbers being similar, our plan to maintain enrollment from year to year by, again, implementing our plan to accept non-resident students in grades 1 through 5 has been effective. At this point in time, all sections remain in the board-approved class size ranges, and section sizes will continue to be monitored in the coming months. Please note that, please also note that these numbers remain fluid at this point in the year, as school and district staff will continue to adjust these totals by welcoming new students to our schools while other students join learning communities outside of our district. So with that, if there are any questions regarding our current enrollment projections or totals for the upcoming school year, I can answer those questions.
What I might offer for the public, and you've heard us say this before, if there's one thing we can guarantee that on October 1, our enrollment will not be 11,453. It will be more or less, because over the course of the next month, you'll have some folks show up, you'll have others who will have life events that will take them other places in the world and may leave our school district. One thing we do regularly, weekly, is update this information. We'll continue to do that through the summer and into the fall. We've had some asked about non-resident enrollment, remember space available basis. We'll watch that closely, too. If there are space, we certainly will accept. If there's not, we'll put people on a waiting list to see how that goes. The other thing, I think, because we will report for you in the fall, that October 1 number, just as a reminder, that's kind of that snapshot every fall of how we're doing. Last fall, Darren, I want to say that was 11,250-ish in that area. So the projection, you might say, we always project conservatively. If you remember, we were shooting for 800 kindergarteners. We graduate 900 seniors, so you already have a reduction of 100. Without non-residents, what does that look like? So the increase you're seeing in those numbers really isn't quite as big probably as the nearly 400 students, but we do that to make sure with a conservative prediction that we come in better than, and that's always our hope. We set a budget so that we're not, in the end, going to lose money if we don't have as many students or overstaffed, right? But we'll watch this closely to make sure we stay well within the ranges for all of our classrooms across the district. So, that's probably more for the public than the board, but I wanted people to understand that we've watched this closely, and we'll make sure that kids are in appropriate-sized classrooms headed into the fall.
Great.
All right.
All right, thank you Darren.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have item 5.1, District Operational Plan 2024-25. It's back to you.
Thank you Diane, a lot of me tonight. So yeah, every year, as part of our district improvement process, we identify goals to be part of our operational plan. In this past year, we had seven total goals, three of them which we identified as priority goals. Now, throughout the course of the year, we had a chance to present on all of these goals publicly at school board meetings, as well as spending considerable time discussing goals at work sessions and with the board individually. We've created a written comprehensive document as well detailing all of that work that goes to the school board, so that they can look at that, provide feedback, and review all that we've submitted as well. And tonight, rather than going back through all of those reports, all of the goals in great detail, our intention really is to provide the public with a reminder of what the seven goals were, and then just at a really high level, talk about those three priority goals. So just to review, the seven goals were early childhood and kindergarten outreach that we did. That was a priority goal for us this year, so I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. We explored the Community Resource Center. We reviewed and evaluated our student support continuum. We were beginning to implement and actually created a three-year technology plan based on our audit recommendations. That also was a priority goal. We were planning for the middle school model implementation. We explored the viability of online courses, specifically at our high schools. And then the implementation of the new READ Act requirements, which was our third and final priority goal. So those were the seven big things that we were reporting on all year, but I want to spend just a few minutes on each of those three priority goals. So the first priority goal, the early childhood and kindergarten outreach, really, again, I know as board members you've heard a lot about this, but for the public, here's a few things that we would highlight for that. Our district staff created kindergarten videos that were entitled "The Day in the Life." They've been shared with parents and are available to the community. The viewing statistics for those are ongoing, we're tracking those in an ongoing way. Team was pleased to see them being viewed at such a high volume, so that content is being consumed, and we're very pleased that it's out there and available for those looking to attend kindergarten in our schools. Our district staff also sent out targeted mailings to family, including over 370 new baby onesies and resource flyers, first birthday cards and books to more than 280 families. Another 280 families received second birthday cards. The third birthday comes with time for early childhood screening, so kids are being invited in to do their screening with a postcard. That went to more than 370 families, so great outreach there. The digital campaign the district ran called "The Best Start Possible" ran from February through April. It included emails that were promoting kindergarten and early childhood programming. Those were sent to more than 19,000 residents, and children ages up to five years old received those. Targeted display ads promoting open enrollment for kindergarten through 5th grade, and social media ads promoting open enrollment kindergarten through 5th grade. There were more than 6,000 clicks. I guess that's how we measure that stuff. Golly, golly's nodding, clicks on things. So, again, well-received, well-seen across our communities. Our early childhood staff have already completed 370 school readiness screenings since November. It's about 70 kids, children, per month engaging with the district through those interactions. Overall, the strategies being used with that goal have been very successful. I think you also heard in our enrollment report, we're seeing that really pay some dividends too, as where we have room, we're able to fill that with students. So we'll continue to monitor our progress and make improvements as opportunities present themselves. A second priority goal, the implementation of the technology audit recommendations. So over the course of the year, our district staff did develop a three-year technology plan. The IT department engaged in conversations with staff across the district, evaluated our FR secure reports, as well as the True North technology assessments. That information was used to create the technology plan, which lays out the goals for the next three years in the areas of educational technology, operational technology support, and cybersecurity. The True North audit recommendations were evaluated and have been incorporated into that plan. Many of those recommendations are really broad-based and expansive, and those recommendations have been actively prioritized and aligned to available funding, so we'll continue to watch that as we move forward. The district also implemented the top FR security audit recommendations. In addition, we completed a second cybersecurity assessment in order to validate the improvements that had been implemented and then to create a new priority list. I know as board members, you know this, but for the public, cybersecurity is just ever-changing. We're constantly seeing new and different approaches to try to get into school districts and try to get at our data. So the focus areas really have been incorporated into the three-year technology plan for cybersecurity. Moving forward, that plan will remain focused on the specific goals and benchmarks that are helping to guide our work. The plan is intended to exist as a living document, so we will be changing that as needed when we see necessary requirements or recommendations in the field. We'll make sure that it continues to align with our mission and values, our curricular and programming needs, as well as responding to and addressing any new cybersecurity threats as they continue to evolve. So that was our second priority goal. Third and final priority goal was the implementation of the READ Act requirements, and I know you as a board have heard a lot about this. I'm not sure how closely the public has paid attention, but this has been an enormous, enormous amount of work for our staff over the course of this school year. Our district staff participated in significant professional development. So to put it in perspective, all K-5 elementary teachers, all K-12 special education teachers, our K-12 multilingual ELL teachers, and any teachers, grades 6 through 8, that were reading teachers, considered reading or doing direct instruction, are required to complete the core learning training of the READ Act, and if they haven't done it already, must complete that by this summer. That is a tremendous lift for all of them to get through all of this professional development. So I want to thank our district staff, our principals, all the teachers that were engaged in that, because it was a lot. It's a lot for them to do and get through. The state is also requiring staff to be trained on the administration of literacy screeners for students. District staff reviewed the state-approved screeners for grades K-3 and chose Fast Bridge for our system, so we've already made that adjustment and part of our system. Teachers were provided with information on how to access and administrate that assessment. That was done both in the fall as well as the winter. And the literacy screener grades for 12 just released, and if I understand, we just got new information as early as last week, making some new and different adjustments to that. So that really is an ongoing set of work that needs to continue. Our curriculum instruction assessment team will continue to review that information and work to create a plan for implementation of that screener as well. The state did require that school districts choose a new core resource for literacy as well. Our support team reviewed the list of eligible materials. We gathered then a group of teachers from across the district and asked them to come in to review those resources. Work groups were formed. They met to discuss the review process, clarify expectations, and view presentations from the selected vendors. Some of our K-5 teachers actually volunteered to participate in what they called deep dive work groups, where they reviewed resources in their entirety. Others did direct teaching work groups and taught lessons to their students, so they were able to evaluate those resources as well. In March, we made final recommendations and approved some of the resources moving forward. They will be 95 phonics for the core They will be ninety-five phonics for the core foundational skills and CKLA for knowledge building skills. Those are K-five resources. District staff are working to secure all of the pricing, identify the PD days that need to be used yet this summer and going into next year. We have orders planned for delivery July twenty twenty-five, so it's just right around the corner, hopefully to have all that material in and then get it out distributed. Professional development and training will be provided to all teachers who'll be using the resources next year. So again, heavy, heavy lift for the READ Act, and I just want to thank our our team and the teachers for all that they did around that significant priority goal. I am happy to say that we met all seven of our our goals this year, and again, recognize that across all of them, I highlighted the the priority goals, but all of them take a team effort. So lots of people involved across the district in in making those goals a reality, so just thank you to everybody in involved. Pleased to be able to offer this brief update tonight, and as I mentioned, the board has our written feedback, and we look forward to your thoughts and comments as a follow-up to that information. With that, I'll end my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Moving on to item six dot one, updates. Jim, Association of Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD, do you have any updates for us?
Yes, we are very involved in monitoring the situation at the legislature. As many people know, or maybe they don't know, the legislature isn't overtime right now. A lot of unofficial meetings working around the clock to try to get a budget put together before the June thirtieth date. It looks like a fair amount of progress has been made. What I've seen on the education side, at least for this next school year, the funding and programmatic things that we are concerned about will be solidly funded. Very appreciative of that. The out years become a little more problematic, but that's what they can deal with next year. But I suspect they'll probably get most of their work done by the weekend and then probably call legislature back in about a week, but I'm not a betting man, so that's that's just a pretty wild prediction. So a lot of work by a lot of people. I know that Chris has been down there to testify. I know a lot of folks have, and good work. Public education is a priority at the legislature, and they treat it as such, so it's important. So thank you for everybody, our local reps, our local senators that take our calls and meet with us, and thank you.
Well, thank you, Jim, for all of your advocating for us and the districts and so forth, so truly appreciate it. Shawna was unable to be with us this evening, so we'll get her update next time for Northeast Metro nine sixteen, and then we'll move on to item six dot two. Anyone have any school board member reports?
Well, I just wanted to say a big congratulations to all of our graduates. I am extremely excited to be with the Irondale graduates next week handing out diplomas. It's one of my highlights of of this role, so I look forward to being with those graduates and their families next week and wish all of our graduates all the best in their next endeavors.
Thank you, Yolanda. Anyone else have any updates?
I was fortunate to have meet with the Bel Air PTA, and it was great fun. I mean, a lot of great stuff for the kids. It's a lot of year-end stuff, carnivals, track meets, that kind of stuff, and it's fun to see so many involved parents and all the activities for the kids. I spent Memorial Day at the St. John's Cemetery in New Brighton with a lot of elected officials, but very proudly with the Irondale Band, who sought volunteers, and they got about twenty-five kids out there playing patriotic songs. And big thanks to the Eagles Club and the VFW and the mayor and the council members who put that on out there. It was a very nice event, remembering those who served and those who perished. And so that was great, and much like Yolanda, it's the best time of the year to be on the school board, seeing the graduates. There's not a big feeling, nothing feeling like that, and so next time we meet, we've got about nine hundred more alumni in the school district, so excellent.
Very true. Anyone else have any updates?
Just to thank to thank you to all of our staff members that were thinking about you in these last couple weeks, and we're grateful as parents and former parents of students in this district for the busyness of the season and just for all of our staff's dedication to carry out the work of the district every day in the classrooms and in the buildings that we serving all the students.
Yes, a couple updates on my end. I had the pleasure of attending the Irondale Equity Award Scholarship banquet several weeks ago. Also, I was at Island Lake PTA meeting last week. They're winding down their school year with all their final activities, and then have also caught a couple of end-of-year sports games and sectionals, so it's been fun, but want to echo what a few of the board members have already said. Congratulations to all of our graduates. Very exciting times ahead for all of you, and then also just thanking all of our staff, teachers, paras, custodians, kitchen staff, everyone. Just, it's been a great year and really appreciate all you do, so enjoy your summers. So, thank you, everyone. If there's nothing else to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.